Please rise, as we salute our flag with Councilman Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Father?
Dear wise and loving God, I say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for our many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the health we need to fulfill our callings and for sustaining us daily. Thank you, we can be involved in this useful work, for the honor of bearing responsibilities entrusted to us by you. Thank you for the freedom to worship you. Thank you for loving us from your boundless gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Guthrie, Oklahoma. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Okay, call this meeting to order, regular city council meeting, June 3, 2025. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. We have three, it looks like. First up would be Gaylord Z. Thomas.
Well, yes, would you like to hold the public comments until we do that?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Anybody else would like to speak beforehand, or is there a specific item they'd want to do it with? No? Okay. All right. Item number three is the consent agenda. Items A through J. Want me to read them all?
Somebody can make a motion to pass those written.
Yeah, can anybody make a motion?
I'm making a motion to pass them all. It's written down.
Okay, there's a motion in second. Okay, my motion is second. Without further discussions, please cast your votes, please.
That was easy.
All votes are in.
For the sake of... It was a vote for all those present.
It was just bill paying.
It's common.
Yeah.
Common paying, exactly, contracts.
Item number four, items remove the consent agenda. There were none. And then we have item number five, Ward 1 City Council position. Discussions, consideration, and possible action to set the application process to fill the vacant Ward 1 position vacated by Mayor Robb for the balance of the current term expiring May 2027. Before we get started on that, I would think it'd be wise that we swap item five and six in order of how we do it. If someone is appointed here on item six, it would make... If they're appointed, great. If they're not, it would make sense then to have the discussion of how to move forward later on, would it not?
That makes sense to me.
So we could entertain a motion to...
Yeah, just entertain a motion just to swap these two in order.
I make a motion.
Motion is second, just to swap these two in order.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about that?
Well, no, I guess not.
Okay. Anybody else? Cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Okay, three to two to swap items five and six. So then we'll do item six, appointment to vacate Ward 1 City Council and GPA W A trustee seat. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to appoint Ed Wan to fill the vacant Ward 1 City Council and GPA trustee position, effective June 3, 2025, for the remainder of the term, ending at the first regular meeting in May 2027. Councilman Bothrow.
So some time back, we put a procedure into place which has been used over time. The difference was that we used two teams of three versus one to do an interview process. So what happens is, you bring the candidates in, you interview in the teams, a third party gets kind of a consensus of where we're at. In this case, it was our city manager. The candidates that unbeknownst to me at the time, there was some kind of issue with getting a consensus on candidates, and Ed Wood, wherever he is, floated to the top. I was headed to dinner, and I was told, called by the city manager who said, there is a consensus for Ed. Now, this isn't a vote, don't get me wrong, okay? Consensus is who do you bring to the table from that interview process? And he said, do you have an issue conceding with Ed? And I said, no, I don't. And that was the end of it for me. The next day, that changed, for whatever reason. We can speculate why, but I don't think there's any reason to go into that. The reason I wanted to bring this up right now was to give the process that we may discuss after this, hopefully not, the proper respect of the process, the respect of everybody's time that was involved. In the past, it's the way it's been done, good, bad, and different. It's the way it's been done with city managers, good, bad, and different. Again, not a vote. It's just a consensus of who do you bring to the table to take that vote based on the interview process that you've done. So knowing that, Ed Wood was, sometime back, I don't remember how, 10 years ago maybe, Ed Wood filed for election, with the election board filed for Ward 1, that exact seat that we're filling. And he won that seat during that process. He was vice mayor for two years during that term, under Steve Ghentling. Did a good job. I mean, this council has never 100% agreed, but we've never really come to some, you know, to a stalemate. We've always been able to try to work through the issues, whatever they may be. So Ed didn't elect to take the term of the next time. That's whatever his reasoning for that, personal issues, whatever, at home. And so, when his name came in the application process, he was interviewed just like everybody else was. Again, at the end of that process, of my three, Maeve, Maneka, and Grant, and Tracy, Jeff, and Adam, a consensus was that one couldn't be made. And I didn't float Ed to the top. Other people did. And he came to the top to bring to this shoe to vote into that seat. And again, the vote didn't happen till that night. So the agenda was read. And before the agenda was even finished, Grant jumped and brought another candidate to the table before the agenda was even being finished, being read. So anyway, long story short, I brought this back in hopes that the process can be fulfilled in the way it was intended to be fulfilled. And this would be happening no matter who that candidate that floated to the top was. It could have been anybody. And if the same thing happened, we'd still be here. It would just be a different name, because it's the process that needs to be respected. So that's it.
I think you actually did touch on it, if you don't mind. In your own perspective, would you mind telling... Well, I think you said it, but just elaborate maybe, or say it again. You saying this candidate rose to the top. What changed?
I didn't write, I didn't, I don't know. I was on my way to dinner, and I got a call. And the call was consensus can't be made, but the consensus is after discussion. I wasn't involved in those discussions. Should have been, but wasn't. Okay? But the candidate that rose with the consensus is Ed Wood. Now, with that being said, what happens at that point, no matter if it was Franklin, or if it was Ed, or Robin, or Seth, or whoever it was, the city manager calls the candidates that had their applications in and tells them, I'm sorry, appreciate you applying, but a different person was chosen. And then after that, the candidate that rose to the top there was called and said, you are the candidate that the council is going to be voting on. And so, they do whatever they're going to do. Tell their family. Same thing happened with Grant. It's, you know, he's not here to discuss it. The exact same procedure happened with Grant. I think you were involved in it. No, maybe you weren't at that point. He was in right before you. So, but the exact same thing happened with Grant. And you can only imagine, I don't know what Ed felt, or what anybody else would have felt in that scenario. But it's the same thing, it's the same procedure that's happened over time, except the one that we did for Kaylee, where it was public. So there's a lot of disappointment in the entirety of it. We, as a council, have to work together. There's a lot we got to do moving forward, a lot. Some of this stuff's on the agenda tonight. And, you know, I just, I beg this council to do, abide by what procedures we set out and put in place. That's all. So with that, I make a motion for Ed Wood to fill Ward 1 seat.
May I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I will say that the week before, the Thursday or Friday, and I would have it my phone, but I'm not going to dig it up, before the council meeting where we made those votes available, I did receive a call from Vice Mayor Gary personally to say, quote, I guess we're at an impasse. And I said, I guess we are. And I don't remember that, it was a short phone call, but he said, well, I will concede to Ed Wood. Then it was Monday morning when I got another call from Vice Mayor Gary again. He said, I'm in a strange position. I've given my word to two people. I'm going to have to break it to somebody. And I said, well, if you're asking me for advice, my advice is to do what you told me you were going to do, period. But it's up to you. I said, but that's my advice, that you do what you said. That was the end of the conversation.
Okay. Just to give everybody a little more context, the reason why this applicant has risen to the top is that there was not an agreement on two candidates. And then, right around the time we're thinking, well, I guess we concede to a third, one of those candidates dropped out. So the agreement of going to this person over here was on the basis of this up here, but then that changed. So that's why you're seeing this, if that makes sense without going into too much detail.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll interject just a little bit on that.
Sure.
That candidate that dropped out, dropped out after he was told by our city manager that he was not the choice.
Well, I didn't know that.
Well, he did. And so therefore, that whole issue of who rose to the top or who didn't, that ship sailed away, because it was already said, consensus-wise, that Ed Wood rose to the top. And so, I would understand the point if he came and said, hey, look, I'm out of this deal. But that's not how it happened. It happened after he was told that he was not the candidate.
So that consensus I was not a part of.
And nor was I.
At all.
Right.
Zero.
Right. So no one's aware of that consensus, so that's why we can't be beholden to it, because none of us were aware of that.
Well, I beg to our city manager on that, because as a third party, that's typically what happens is, the candidates, I mean, the city manager in this case would get the consensus, because you have to tell the candidate that you're coming to be potentially voted in and sworn in.
Well, I genuinely, I sincerely say I don't, I didn't know that, like, as far as calling up everybody and telling them, that being a process. I didn't, I don't know that.
So you didn't know that Ed was going to be called and told he was the candidate, just like Grant was? Grant was the same exact way.
Well, and I didn't know everybody else would be called and told they weren't. I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, that's out of respect to call him.
No, I get it. I just didn't know. Didn't know he did.
Well, knowing what you know now, that's one of the reasons that I just wanted to make sure that we brought this back and undertake this process like we should have undertaken it in the first place, regardless of who floated to the top. Okay? That's what happened. And that's why I make a motion for...
Well, and then final, if I may say another thing, what we also agreed on at the last meeting is that at this meeting, we would have a discussion about how to move forward, not that we'd be appointing somebody. And that's also a reason why Grant is not even here, is he chose this meeting to do something he's needed to do for a while. I'm sure if had he known this was going to be an appointment, he would have changed his plans again to make it. But I'm saying, this meeting was supposed to be the discussion about how we want to move forward to fill the seat, not filling the seat. And all of us get an agenda pack on Friday, and all of a sudden, we're appointing somebody.
Well, I had reached out to the city manager, and for the sake of just having unity here, okay, I'm making a motion for Ed Wood.
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, I have no personal issue with Ed Wood, so I'm going to abstain from the vote then.
Just a front conversation, let's have the vote.
Okay. Any further discussions?
No, I also am going to abstain from the vote.
Okay. Cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Okay. It's a three. Does not pass. I believe the city charter states we have to have four voting members.
That's correct.
Okay. That was item six. We swapped these. Item number five, Ward 1 City Council position. Discussions, consideration, and possible action to set the application and process to fill the vacant Ward 1 position vacated by Mayor Robb for the balance of current term expiring May 2027. Okay, everyone, how are we, how do we want to move forward to fill this then?
Well, we already put a process in place, and I get that the process failed and was broken, however it was. And, but it is the same process that's been used for 10-plus years that I know of. And so, with that being said, I don't know at this point, personally.
I think it's simple. I think we do what we did, where we have applicants. And this time, upon choosing, we don't do what we did last time on the ending of how that ended up, I feel.
You mean, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, just however this went awry this time with miscommunicating our feelings or where we are on the issues. I mean, we just, we don't have that this time.
Yeah, I don't know that, again, from my perspective, there was no feelings. I was headed to dinner and was told what a communication-type scenario, whatever it was, I wasn't involved in it. I was just told, this is the consensus. Do you agree with that consensus? And I said, well, if that's the consensus, I agree. Okay? And I would have agreed whoever it was, because it's the process.
Well, I do want to say, I appreciate, I believe that ever, the way you're describing it, I do think you're describing it as honestly as you can, and I appreciate that with how the events unfolded. So I do want to state that. Maneka, what are your thoughts?
I thought the interview process in itself was, it actually went really well. What I wanted was feedback individually from the other councilmen, because we were in two separate feedback groups, right? So I felt that it was really important that, you know, I reached out to Councilman Williams, and I reached out to Councilman Taylor to also get how those interviews went for them individually. That way, you know, you could kind of get a feel for how the application process went. Not what their vote was going to be, or what they wanted, but how they felt from it. Because we were in different groups, we had different sets of questions. And the rooms were different. Would they interview you on a Friday? Friday's a different day than a Monday. We interviewed on Monday. So Tracy and I had a really long, great conversation. And Councilman Taylor and I weren't able to catch up and get together on the matter. But whenever it came down to it, I just, I think that being able to sit together, I think that there could have been more of a consensus on a candidate. And it is really hard whenever you have a former councilman that's come forward and put his application in, and obviously is qualified for the position. But you also cannot become qualified for a position or gain experience if you are never put in the chair. And this council has put forward a set of qualifications on the record.
Who's put, who's done that?
You.
I've never put a qualification on the record.
Oh, yes. Yes, you have.
What's the qualification, Maneka?
When Kaylee and Brian ran previously for a seat, two of the things that put Kaylee in her seat were stated. It was that she had served on a board or commission previously. That was one.
All right. Well, show me where I said that.
I can, but not right now.
Okay. I'd like to see that. What's the other?
I think it's at minute 42 of that meeting two years ago. I think I already looked it up.
So...
And realize, with the process with Kaylee, that was the first time we completely did a public interview for five minutes. We didn't know these candidates from anything. On our interview process, your questions were probably 10 minutes long. Okay? That's not bad, but it's twice what we gave just one candidate with all of us here.
Okay.
Okay? So the process that we did before was way too short. If I said that, I'll own it, okay, at the end of the day, and I will. Every candidate here that's come, that we're talking about, has sat on boards, okay, and has run campaigns. So what's the point?
Well, that was the other, that was the other thing they gave them, that they had to also have run a campaign. Not all of them did.
My vote was going to be for Seth.
I understand that.
Okay. Well, no, everybody else doesn't know that, but it was. Okay? So that doesn't hold anything. That holds no water whatsoever.
I wasn't aiming my directive at you.
Well, yeah, you kind of were. The candidates at question here, okay, have done that. They've run the campaigns. And they have been on boards. So there you go.
I'd like to make a clarification. The conversation I had with Ms. Maneka Councilwoman was prior to the meeting that night. It was about an hour long. We had a good conversation. We talked about our backgrounds and careers. I thought it was a good opportunity to get to know you, and you to me, and we left very positively. I don't recall discussing the candidates at all.
I talked about the meeting with you, but I didn't ask about any candidates individually.
I don't believe we talked about qualifications of candidates or anything applied.
You left it with, this is who I'm voting for, and I'm not changing your mind. I said, I didn't ask you who you're voting for, and I didn't ask you to change your mind.
I don't remember that at all. I did not recall those words. I'm not saying you're wrong. I just don't recall that at all.
Okay.
It was stated, though, when we appointed Kaylee Mills.
Oh, sorry. No, 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 I didn't interrupt you. No, no, no. That's the end of it.
Okay. I do specifically recall when we appointed Kaylee Mills. It was stated, and I, because I went back and watched this meeting, and it was stated by more than one member up here, sitting here right now, that the qualifications that you felt she had, that we should be looking for, is that they cared to put in their name to actually run for the race, and that they've cared to volunteer for commissions and positions, and that they show up to meetings. And I'm not speaking for Councilwoman Gibbs, but I think that's what she's saying, that Franklin had ticked all of those boxes that we had established for the appointment of her, but then they kind of changed.
Well, in retrospect, I mean, just seriously, on that note, okay, Seth also was on our CIP committee, okay, which was a pretty critical committee that we appointed these members to.
Right.
And so, he did tick that box. But again, when someone rose to the top, those ships sailed, okay? And Ed ticked every box.
I would interject yours. I think we had that conversation a second ago. I think, I think it's time to move forward to what the next process is going to be.
What about the, I mean, we didn't like it, but we didn't have this problem. So maybe we go back to the live interview process that we did with Kaylee, so there's no, there's no miscommunication. And everything's transparent and out in the open, and everybody can see the best candidate is. They come up here, and we, we ask them the questions like we did then. It, it had its problems, but it didn't have this.
No, it didn't. We've never had this, ever. And I, there's a, there's probably a reason or two that we have had this. But again, for the sake of unity, we'll leave that on the table. But at the end of the day, I'm going to leave it up, you know, my position is, we've already done the process. And the process was known by all, and it was, it, it felt it was manipulated, okay? I'm not naming any names on it, it just, it had the real feel of that, in a big way.
Can I ask you a question? And is, what's the point of the process? Are you, are you planning on changing the, the process?
I didn't change the process this time.
I'm asking you, if this was voted in, is the process going to be the exact same? The same three people interviewing the same people?
We, we can, or we can go back to the way we did when we appointed Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mills, where we do it up here, and they come up and answer questions. I mean, we got it done like that night. And there was no miscommunication, there was no, you know, it was all transparent, it was all out, and everybody saw it, so we can go back to that.
If I can't answer your question, though. At this point, that motion, those motions failed. So we're sitting here today, starting from scratch. And the only guidance you have from the charter is that there has to be a consensus, there has to be four votes. It doesn't talk about interviews, it doesn't talk about applications, it doesn't talk about anything. It just says four votes. So it's a blank slate today for you guys to figure out what this process looks like going forward. And we're not bound by anything we did last time. We tried it, it, we brought motions, they failed, so it's, it's a clean slate.
So, the, the suggestion from Mayor is, as before, to let him come before council, give their, ask their questions, responses, and then.
It's what we did with Mills.
Yeah, I'm just, that's what we did last, I'm just suggesting, do you want to do that?
I, I don't, I don't have any problem with that.
Councilman Taylor, what do you feel?
We've done it the whole.
If it's, if it's going to move forward, I don't have a problem.
Well, I don't either, if, if it's, yeah, if it'll move forward. The problem is, are we going to just have the same candidates going to apply again?
I don't know.
I think they will.
Tune in and find out. So, what do you think over here on the process, the way we did it with Kaylee Mills?
I don't have any issue with that. Brian?
Um, you know what? I'm going to go with whatever the unified group wants to do.
What, what's your opinion?
If, if we were to go forward with the live interview process, would we reopen the application process? And if so, what timeline would you like to see on that? Just as it was previously, seven days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I personally have seen the reason why we can't do it at the next meeting.
How about we just bring the four candidates that we had that have already applied? Well, I understand, Billy, it's a due process that was broke.
I think we're starting fresh again now, so.
That's up to them. I think it's just a clean slate of whoever wants to. It can be somebody that's put their name in seven times or none, it doesn't matter. They can do it. I mean, I don't think, you can't legally stop anybody. I mean, they can apply as many times as they want.
One other thought.
So what's the alternative? Because I keep hearing there's a, there's an alternate, we're a charter city, and our charter says for councilpeople shall appoint this position. So I keep hearing, if the seat's not filled in 60 days, goes to a special election, that doesn't hold any water, as far as what I've seen.
There's, there is no, and I've, I've been looking at this, and been asked this question multiple times, there is no mechanism for us to get to an election.
So if we leave the seat unfilled, what happens?
You don't have a majority vote of anything. You have three, three times.
I was, it's terrible. I thought, I thought it was state law that says that you have to.
Unchartered cities.
That's correct. So typically, when the charter is silent, unless the charter expressly prohibits something, you, you have to be governed by something. State law, in any situation, if the charter is silent on something, you would rely to what statute says. And in statutory cities, if you can't fill the vacancy within 60 days, it triggers a special election. Do we need to look at this for the future? Probably. We probably need to clarify for the future that if it isn't filled, that we would like to call a special election to fill the seat.
Just for the, just for the record, too, that the council appointing a vacant seat, that came about when these terms were two years, and the city did not have a lot of money to put it to a special election. Now it's four-year terms, and we do have, I think, the money to do it. Personally, I would like to see a vote of the people to change the charter, where if there's a vacancy, it just goes to the vote of the people. That way you have representatives up here that represent them. So that's just my personal opinion, and that doesn't get us anywhere now, but I'm just saying in the future, I, I would like to see that. Okay, well.
Well, I'll read.
Yeah.
I'll go with whatever you guys decide.
Well, Maneka, you, you're okay with the, the interview, thus the way we did with Kaylee Mills?
Yep.
Okay. Tracy said he was okay, Jeff said he was okay. All right, will somebody want to make a motion then? Well.
For, for clarification, on dates, application will be open. We could open it tomorrow, close it on the 10th, and have it ready for your meeting on the 17th. If you'd like to have a, would you like to do it at your regular meeting? Would you like to have a special workshop? Is there a thought?
Do a regular meeting. If you're going to do it public, you're going to do it public.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Sounds good. So it would, the application process would open on the 4th, close on the 10th, and you would interview on the 17th at your regular meeting. Okay.
Sounds good. All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? If none, cast your votes, please.
All votes ranked?
Unanimous approval from all those present. Okay, item number seven, oath of office, we have none. Great, all right. Item number eight, election of a vice mayor. Thoughts on this?
So every couple of years, over time, at least it's changed that I've known, so I'm going to make a motion for Tracy for vice mayor.
I'll second that.
My only question to everybody, and it wouldn't matter who it is, is that there's, there's three primary duties of vice mayor, I'm just putting this out. One is to fill in for this role here in the vac, in the absence of the mayor to run the meetings. Second is the weekly or, or every other week, meeting with the city manager. It's been a tradition for decades. And that's usually during the day. And then the third is to fill in for the mayor for ceremonial duties, that again, happen throughout all hours and times of the day. So I'm just putting that out there, that that is, that is part of the qualifications of the vice mayor position, so.
Well.
Please keep that in mind. If, are you available to do those things?
Let's, let's, if we're talking qualifications, let's, let's really talk about it then. Because meeting with the city manager is not a qualification of the vice mayor.
The ability to be able to do so.
I get that.
Your availability.
Okay, but every Wednesday, as a matter of fact, you and I've had conversations about in the past when there was a different mayor, about the thoughts on that. So, and we know what that is, we'll leave that alone, okay? But that's not a prerequisite of vice mayor at all.
Or is it of a mayor?
Or is it of the mayor, actually? Okay?
What, what do you mean by that?
The meeting with the city, with the meeting with the city manager every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday. Does that require?
No.
Well.
It never has, but you had a problem with it.
It's not in the city, it's not in the city charter, but it is what we have done for 30 years.
I know, but you had an issue with it with Steve.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did. You told, you told me, you had, you had, you were wondering what's going on in these.
I had an issue that they kept everyone out.
Exactly.
Everyone, everyone's welcome to come in.
Okay, well, that's a good thing to know, because that was never the case, Steve.
They asked me to come in.
But the vice mayor, that's not a prerequisite of that. So I'm making a motion for Tracy, and Jeff seconded it.
All right, well, Council Williams, do you, do you?
I would rather wait until we have this seat filled.
Okay.
That's your?
Yes. I would accept it, but I think best, let's have a full council, and go from there.
All right. The motion, retract it.
I mean, honestly.
My motion's retract it.
Jeff, you retract your second?
Yep.
I'll retract it.
So we don't have to worry about that.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion to table this?
Motion to table, until the seat's filled.
First, second, okay. Further discussion, cast your votes.
There you go.
How about three?
All right, unanimous approval.
You'll find out real quick that it's.
For tabling the vice mayor position. Item number nine, 201 North 13th Street, special use permit. Dan Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The request in front of you is an amendment to an existing special use permit. This in particular would be to eliminate one of the conditions, which states no receptions, meetings, parties, et cetera, are allowed. I think most of you are familiar with this particular property. It originally, in 2023, was approved for five units with conditions. One of the conditions is what I had mentioned. Earlier this year, in February, they came back to go from five units to seven units, which was approved by the council. And again, so tonight is dealing with the specific condition. The applicant had requested that this be eliminated, because it would not allow them to have any type of meetings whatsoever, even inside. The planning commission had recommended 4-0 to have the condition eliminated in its entirety. There were public comment in regards to this, which was provided in your packet, and I believe some of the same people here have signed up to speak tonight. So with that, I'll give it back to the council, and if you have any questions, I mean.
All right, I'll, I'll go ahead and have comments now, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to do that? Or do you guys want to ask questions now? Or do you want to hear the people? Okay. Gaylord Z Thomas? Please state your name, just that you're a resident, you don't have to give your address.
Mayor of City Council, I'm Z Thomas at 1403 West Cleveland, and live right south of this address that's happening in this issue. Prior to the planning commission meeting, I sent a letter to the commissioners with my concerns about removing this restriction from the permit. And at that meeting, I also made myself available for questions, but was told that my letter was pretty clear, and no questions were asked of me. Since then, I've written two letters to the council, and each of these three letters spawned a single call from a commissioner or a council member. I do appreciate those calls, I do. My big issue is the apparent lack of due diligence that has been exercised in the haste of approving this application. Your opinions can differ from mine, I'm sure they do, but council has a duty to exercise due diligence in its form of collecting its collective opinion. That has not happened with this issue. And if you watched the video of the planning commission meeting, that was obvious, even to my point that the motion itself was to approve the application, rather than to recommend approval to the city council. I'm still of the opinion that it needs to go back to the commission for them to take a proper action, and give them another chance to exercise their due diligence required and expected of them as the body recommending action to this body. The residents of this neighborhood have collectively, collectively made it clear that the parking is a concern at this facility. And I use the term facility intentionally, because, one, nobody resides there. And two, that's how the applicant himself referred to it at the planning commission meeting, when he and his employee both stated that this facility was not designed to host big events. Nobody has even mentioned that there's a fire hydrant at the corner of this location, and that the city has not marked that corner as a no parking zone. So there's even less parking available than you would guess at the first glance, if you were to properly mark that as no parking. This is the same peculiar kind of failure to exercise due diligence that I'm concerned about in this unexplainable rush to approve the removal of this restriction. Instead of the clarification of what the restriction means, that the applicant stated is all he really wanted, and it was also on display when the permit was expanded from five rooms to seven. How so? It's my understanding that the issue of ADA compliance came up, but was brushed aside, poo-pooed, and ignored totally. Apparently, nobody is concerned about that, but the federal law and the fines are pretty steep when you get caught up in one of those lawsuits. Some might think that the facility is older, and it's proudly grandfathered for those considerations. However, that's not 100% true. These older facilities do get some special considerations, such as not being required to alter the main entrance appearance to comply, but they are still required to provide the alternative entrance for the handicapped, and handicap parking, and certain number of ADA compliant rooms in the facility, depending on their size. So when the permit expanded from five rooms to seven back in February, did the planning commission exercise due diligence and note that due to this new capacity, this facility's status changed, and there was now without question an ADA compliance requirement? No, they didn't. I'll answer that for you. And when they expanded the number of rooms, you would also logically think they would probably had to expand the number of bathrooms in the facility as well. So did the applicant secure permits for the work to be done, or was that aspect also skipped? And were any of these kinds of questions asked when you approved the growth from five to seven rooms? Probably not, right? So due diligence has not had a front row seat at any of these considerations, at least not so far. As a side question, when did your ADA advisory committee last meet? Did you ask them about a recommendation on this issue? I'm guessing not. When I was a council member, we were constantly cleaning up after the rural water debacle that, debacle that was, we inherited from a previous council and city manager, where someone's opinion was in conflict with a different federal law. And the cost, that cost the city quite a bit to finally put those issues behind us. Couple of you remember that, I'm sure. What I'm seeing in this instance is that a similar lack of due diligence was with permitting this facility, masquerading as a residence, absolutely did not occur when the five to seven room expansion was approved earlier this year, without any acknowledgement of the ADA requirements that were created by that growth. Who's liable for that? Well, the city probably is liable for the sidewalks not being in ADA compliance, and perhaps the applicant is responsible for any non-compliant issues, such as parking, accessibility, as well as other issues within the facility. So perhaps the applicant could come back and sue the city, since he was not properly advised or advised at all of the undeniable federal requirements that went with the growth of his facility. And importantly, as I pointed out, that all things are not equal, and this is also important to know about these ADA laws, because given that the applicant doesn't actually reside in this facility, and nobody does, and since there were five or fewer reservable rooms, this facility was already considered a place of public accommodation, in quotes, and ADA compliance was therefore already required, but they are non-compliant. This is not necessarily so of the other BNB's in town, because the owners reside in at least most of them. A gravel driveway and a parking space probably won't measure up, and a handicap reserved parking space will also take as much as two parking spaces when you make it van accessible, and there would be a need to proper ramp to build up to the, to the alternate entrance. So parking is taking another, a law-induced hit, when you have to put in that kind of extra space. Saying nothing about the idea of having an apartment residence in the garage portion of that facility that has come up, but involves more permanent vehicles in the area. I'm almost done.
Okay, go ahead, finish. Thank you.
Bottom line, you're entitled to your personal opinions, but collectively, it can never be a substitute for due diligence, particularly where there are federal laws that will take precedence, and pretty clearly, due diligence was not exercised in the previous growth and approved. Not only should the council unanimously deny this application to remove this restriction, you really need to back up and at least temporarily suspend your approval from the growth, of the growth from five to seven rooms, until you see that the facility, as well as the city's responsibilities, such as the sidewalks, are all ADA compliant. Once you have done that, then you need to find out why this restriction was implemented in the first place, and satisfy yourselves that those concerns have also been adequately mitigated. But your opinions are never a proper substitute for proper due diligence or federal laws. This sage advice is that when you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. Fix the ADA problems created before you dig yourself into a deeper hole. Fix the ADA problems created before you dig yourself into a deeper hole.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You have any questions for me? We're not allowed. Okay.
Michael and or Faith Stutzman, is that how it's pronounced, sorry? Please state your name and you, you do not have to do your address, you can just say you're a resident here if you don't want to.
Faith Stutzman, we live across the street.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Okay, I would like to address last time when we came to the meeting. First of all, none of us were notified. We had Kenny Porter stop by and let us know that what was going on. It's a responsibility for you and you to notify all the residents if you're trying to do something different for a special use permit or anything. We did not know anything about it, nor did we know about this one, except for Kenny and Z. Little bit of an issue there. Not only that, the Chamber of Commerce, he has Heidi, who's the assistant for the Chamber of Commerce, is also one of his employees. She testified up here last time that she wanted this to be pushed through. That to me is a big conflict of interest. Everybody in here has a responsibility to protect the residents of Guthrie. That is your responsibility. Your best interest is not for the residents of Guthrie. I've talked to several business owners. They said they are fearful to come up here and talk to anybody because they have experience. If they got involved, their business suffered. That's an infringement of the First Amendment, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. If you are infringing on people's businesses because they do not correspond with your ideologies, we have an issue, big one. Now, we are a new member of to this society, this community. I'm born and bred Oklahoma. My roots go very deep. I'm appalled, to say the least, of how things are being going around here. Evidently, a lot of checks and balances have not been taken care of. I already like you. You have a book, there's a statues, you can read them, black and white, they're already done, you don't have to come up with something new. They've been in place for a very long time and there's a reason for it, for bickering. That's what this has been, bickering. Now, if our neighbors are afraid to speak, the Guthrie residents are fearful for their income and their livelihood to speak out. You might want to think about putting yourself in their shoes. Not only has there been a conflict of interest, we have stumbled upon that the owner of the judges' chambers has now got his place in the back for rent. Do you guys know anything about that? Anyone? Okay. So there's a lot of things that are going on behind closed doors and I think you guys actually put that together very.
What's your name?
Monica.
Ms. Gibbs? So when things are going on behind closed doors and there's no transparency, that's a violation of how due process works. I would suggest maybe having a refresh course for everybody who's on council and is supposed to represent and be for the citizens of Guthrie. Put the citizens of Guthrie first. Has anybody found about the zoning, the rezoning, the taxes, everything that's going to come in after this? If you live here, it's going to affect you. People who are already in poverty can't afford to fix their houses, roofs are caving in. Not bother anybody's conscience at all. Even with the Chamber of Commerce, there is a national Chamber of Commerce policy and procedures. I would be very, very impressed if those things were looked into and maybe followed because from what I've seen just a little time that I've been here, nobody's following anybody thinking anything except for what you want to and your own personal thinks so. Anything else?
Yeah, when we were here, one of the biggest things at the Planning Commission was, was honestly parking, okay? And then we were told several times when the applicant came up that they had a plan for parking. Nobody presented that plan. Okay? And then with the fire hydrant being there on the corner, like, yes, that takes away some of your parking. I mean, and like, everybody that lives here, you know, in the summertime, tourists come here, they drive down Cleveland slow, they're looking at all the houses and everything, so much so that we during the summer try and move all of our vehicles and stuff around so that they can do that. Well, if we start packing that street full of people, I mean, it, it's just going to be a pain. And the biggest, I mean, like, I have heard from the applicant that all he wants to do is have a Super Bowl party. He doesn't live there. So if, if he's not willing to come forth and answer what he really, what, what he really wants to do, or if there's any way we can put a restriction on it so that it doesn't get out of hand, he doesn't want to have a Super Bowl party. But the et cetera on his application doesn't tell anybody what he wants to do. That's what needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you both. Is the applicant here? Yes, he is. Just naming your address, you're, you're on here, but you're a part of the actual agenda so we can't ask you questions.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Jim.
Say that part again, I'm sorry.
He's a part of the agenda so we can.
But we can't respond to the others.
So they're public comments.
Because I do have some responses.
Can he respond?
Traditionally, during public comments, the council's policy is that you, you do not respond.
Okay, right.
The council is to listen. And then during the, the case, which because the applicant is a part of the case, he does have the opportunity to address anything he'd like to address. You can ask the questions that maybe have been stated and hopefully navigate those answers.
Thank you, Eddie.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Martindale, I am the owner of two zero one North Thirteenth Street. I think the council is pretty clear on my position on this, so I think at this point I'd just like to answer any questions that council might have.
I have a lot of questions. First of all, because of the ADA question, do we have anything on that? Oh, I'm sorry, I guess you're the, would be the one to answer that. I think, I'd like that forward.
The applicant's not, or the person, the gentleman who spoke, Mr. Thomas, is not wrong, but it is a responsibility of every property owner, business owner in the entire community to be ADA compliant. We as the city, the only time we get involved with ADA is if there's a building permit as part of that process. Even in a remodel type situation or an expansion situation, a building permit per the building code says that you have to use thirty percent of the assessed value of that project towards ADA. That could be a space, that could be an accessible walk, it could be a bathroom, there, you know, an entrance, there's many ways that that can be utilized. But generally, that's the only time that we are involved because otherwise, as was, as he had indicated, there is no grandfathering. Every property owner and every business owner in the community is responsible for that.
So should we expect that?
Yes, it should be expected from the property owner to do it, to be, because if he's not or if any business is not, there is a suit that could be brought against them to make sure it is ADA compliant.
And this occurred because of five to, when it went from five to seven?
No, that, the, the general ADA is the federal code. So whether, you know, in some instances, it could be a duplex or it depends on the situation and, and what there is. And even just like a business downtown or, or that, they're supposed to have all their ADA up to current code at any given time.
Okay, thank you.
That answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is that in the plans to move forward?
Yeah, we're looking into actually the, the ADA, we do have, this is on the historic registry. And if you look at all the historic buildings that are downtown, very few are ADA compliant just because of the nature of the historic. And turning them into that would be problematic. So we are looking into that, but if you do go up and down the street, most of them are, are not in fact because of the age and, and that sort of thing.
Is there? I actually looked into this myself and in historic preservation, there are exemptions to the way you do things.
Right, and that's what we're, there are, and this is listed on the National Historic.
Yes.
And, and again, unfortunately, not, I think fortunately, we're not able to change the exterior appearance because of its, and, and ADA would be, and that would be part of the exemption.
However, what I read was at the bare minimum, you had to, because of your number of rooms, you had to supply one parking space, which was van accessible. And have an alternative entrance and a ramp to that entrance and a bathroom that accommodated on one room, based on the number of rooms you have.
Yeah, we are.
That's what I read.
Yeah. We're talking to Mr. Kasich about actually the type of ramp and the construction and the materials necessary. He indicated that it's got to be metal instead of what we, but yes, we are looking.
So you're moving forward with that?
We are moving forward.
Okay. Also, I watched in the original commission, Planning Commission meeting, where the decision was made for the no reception parties, et cetera. And I appreciate Abe Gaussempoor for his concern for the citizens, the neighbors that had been there, quote unquote, for a long time. That's when the, the limit, total limit of people was set to twenty. During that meeting, you, you agreed to that, is, is you still agree to twenty people maximum?
Well, I, I think what has transpired, and I didn't know nor did the council know at the time, but because of the historic nature of the judge's house, it's arguably one of the most historically relevant, what has happened because of the language that they put in, we literally got a cease and desist order from the city because they said, the city, Mr. Kasich, said because of the way it was worded, you literally cannot have a tea party or, or anything else. And to Mr. Thomas's point, I use the Super Bowl party euphemistically. So.
Well, and Mrs. Clark, or Keller, excuse me, made comments that to me as a citizen would be shocking as to bridal showers and baby showers and those types of things, which to me in my mind create a large crowd. But back to this number that was set during the, when this SUP was put in place. At that time, the, the zoning said you were required to have off-street parking. Now, according to the new, that's changed, that there's no mention of requiring simply and completely off-street parking. I remember Mrs. Keller, Ms. Keller bringing forth a map of how many cars she could fit there and so on and so forth. But you are required one space, one parking space per room, period, right? Yes. So now you have seven rooms. Your current advertisement online by your rooms, you have a capacity with the five rooms is fourteen people. Because you have one bedroom per room and then you have one room with four beds and four guests, that's why you're advertising, one guest, one room, or two guests per room.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, the, the fourteen is because we, after the approval of seven, it would be two per, which is fourteen.
Okay. So, but also, are you aware that the, the code today says that a single, it describes a bed and breakfast as owner occupied, which has been changed. I saw the new code today. The single-family attached dwelling unit or commercial establishment up to twelve units that provides temporary accommodations, typically including a morning meal to overnight guests. This use may also include the temporary accommodation of daytime meetings or receptions for guests or a fee. Is that what you're saying that, that these meetings or combinations you're, or these gatherings you're asking for is, so when people come to stay there, a family gathering, they can have these meetings because that's what it says, it's for guests?
Yeah, that's correct. We're, we're not interested in going out and saying, come in and rent our property. We're talking about guests and unfortunately, the guests can't do that. Now, having said that, and, and from an economic sense, we now have to kind of bifurcate that and say, what about the city? The city has a keen interest in this property and be, the way that it was written, literally, we can't have the chamber, we can't have the tea, we can't have the, the Girl Scouts over, we can't have anything because now, do we charge for those? No, we don't. But the way it's written is that we can't regardless of if, if we charge for it, which we don't or not. But we're here for the city as far as, again, the, the Christmas walk, the Eighty-Niners Day, and literally, we cannot do any of those anymore and we've curtailed those. And we got a letter from the city that says you can't do that because of the way it was written. The, that was not the intent, we believe, of the city council and anybody who, who is here would, can look back on that, but.
Well, it was the intent of the original Planning Commission meeting and you agreed to it. And I'm not trying to be flippant about it, but you made a comment during the process that you were asked, and I'm guessing this was the territorial Christmas, you were asked to do, and it was a profit center for a group, what, what grouping were you referring?
Oh, that's the, the territorial, they, they sell tickets to, to do that. All of these things, which has no bearing on anything, but costs us money, they don't, we don't, we have never received any, as a matter of fact, we donated on each of the thing, I think they give a stipend for refreshments, we've always donated back to that and have never taken it as a, as a fee.
Do you recall how many people came through on that territorial?
Lots and lots, for sure, absolutely. Yeah, it was quite well attended.
So either way, we would have to have a variance on the SUP to allow for those?
Correct. The, the way it's stated, yes, yeah.
Yes.
Or, or, I, I wouldn't say a variance, I, I think instead, an amendment which would eliminate that, otherwise.
Made any violation for those.
Correct.
For that too.
Correct, that is right.
It was, it was mentioned several times, this house or this was not intended to be for large gatherings. That was said time and time again. And and I believe it shouldn't be in, in respect for the neighborhood and the neighbors over there, as Abe pointed out. But I'm, I do want that to be a part of the historic value to see. I do want and see the value in the Chris, the Christmas tour. Is there anything at Eighty-Niners, is it open there too or what, that for Eighty-Niner Day, there was there tours, that tour as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, we do it on, we're, we're asked to do it and we have not refused until at this point, which we have to.
Are you aware that there's an occupancy limit to the size of your property?
Uh, per the SUP, yes.
Well, I'm just talking about in general.
No. I'm not aware that there is.
You want to comment on that, please?
Through the building and fire codes, there is always a limitation on the occupancy for any, it's obviously based on use and the size of a particular building. So whether it's a bed and breakfast, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a retail store, there's equations in the code that say you can't exceed X occupancy. For a house that's generally that size, which is almost four thousand square feet and the number of rooms, roughly, it's around twenty-five people maximum for occupancy. Obviously, we would have to have a specific layout of the rooms and ingress, egress and that to have a definitive, which is what we do when anything goes through a process and that to make sure on the life safety side. But there is a built-in limitation based on the building fire codes. That answer your question?
So, thank you.
Yeah.
So I think based on that alone, we have to follow those limitations by law.
Correct.
And at the moment, you're saying, in your. And at the moment, you're saying, in your estimation, it's twenty-five people, but without a thorough study, it may be a couple more.
It could be less, it could be more, right.
Okay. Should we wait until that study's done? I mean, it's law, it's code, it's important.
Yeah.
The, the only thing I could comment is, the current limitation is likely within the allowable occupancy, which is the twenty we were talking about. If we were looking at probably having more people, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five or something like that, we would definitely want to look at it because we're probably going to get in a range that is beyond what the code would allow.
So are you saying, since we know we're in the limits today at twenty, we should hang there and come back until?
No, I was just saying that I would be comfortable saying that that's within the occupancy allowances, current, by his current situation.
Okay, so if you're comfortable that is the code enforcement, until you know different, then I would say it stands at twenty?
Yes, correct.
Today?
Yes.
And in adjacent to, does that twenty include guests?
It would include the, anybody that's in that house at any given time.
Okay. So, as the new zone reads, the zoning code reads today is that the use may also include the temporary accommodation of daytime meetings and receptions for guests or a fee. And now we determine presently, the twenty, the twenty max capacity, which has already been decided prior for an SUP, is a comfortable level until we know different.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So my motion is to go with the zoning as it speaks. Meetings, daytime meetings and receptions, yes. For guests, yes, with a twenty-member, twenty capacity. That's my motion.
Okay. We had questions before.
We have a lot of. Anybody down?
I apologize for.
I've got quite a few.
Yeah, let's do it.
No, go ahead.
Um, so, I did do a little bit of research and according to state statute seventy-four dash three seventeen dash one, bed and breakfasts are exempt from the State Fire Marshal Commission standards in regards to building codes. So that might be something we also look into as far as our own new code is concerned. Whenever we start looking into exactly how many need to be listed into that house. Historically, that home's third floor was a ballroom. So that home in itself was meant for entertainment, and it held many dignitaries. And I'm sure guests far exceeded twenty-five or twenty in nature. Also, a bed and breakfast is by the State Fire Marshal, defined as a private house where sleeping accommodations are available for transient guests where breakfast is included with the rent. It doesn't say that they live there. It doesn't state that it's their private residence. I only said out of this portion of it in itself. So, just out of this code in itself, this portion of the code reads that way, out of the state statute. So, I personally had a reception in my house with twenty-eight guests. So I know it would be rather hard for me to even have Thanksgiving at my house for any fewer than twenty-eight, as I have a very large family. So I know that the applicant here has a large family, although they don't all live here, but say he wanted to bring them all here from California. I'm sure that family is very large. And what then? We start restricting people on what they do in their own homes? He does own it. It is his personal residence. So whether he resides there full-time or not, excuse me?
We're not taking comments from the audience, please, thank you.
Whether he resides there full-time or not is not the issue. Many people in town own what they call bed and breakfasts, and they're Airbnbs that people do not live in. It's done all over town. So he's not the only one to own a private residence or a private property listed as a bed and breakfast that he does not live in. There are many people.
Where do you stay when you're in town?
I stay at two-ten West Oklahoma. We bought an apartment there. It, the heater doesn't work, so I'm at two-oh-one North Thirteenth Street last night and tonight.
Chief, real quick, you want to respond to that? On all of it? Is it approved through the fire department?
So, just for, for clarification, Councilman Taylor, the statute that is referenced relates specifically to sprinkler system and exit requirements only, is for bed and breakfast establishments which are open for business prior to the effective date of the act, which is nineteen ninety-five, any bed and breakfast establishments which open for business on or after the effective date, which provides sleeping accommodations of four rooms or less. So the statute goes on to say municipalities may enact ordinances, excuse me, for bed and breakfast establishments which are the same or as different by the rules adopted by the State Fire Marshal Commission relating to sprinkler system and exit requirements only. So we have the flexibility within that statute, but that is the, the bulk of what has been referenced.
Yes, and I was going with exits also in regards to ADA as well. I was previously in that house with a previous owner, and she did, and it's not there anymore, but she did have a way to get up and down the back staircase with an electric lift as ADA because she was handicapped in that way. It's no longer there. But either way, um, I was able to go there before the requirements were imposed, and I was there for garden club, and it, it didn't last that long, and it was a great establishment. And I didn't feel like we took up too much time. And just like any other, you know, portion on the street, we did take up some temporary parking on the street and some in the gravel lot behind the property as well. And I enjoyed my time there on the property and was really glad that that has been opened up. There can be other ways to handle the street parking and maybe through a red assessment, that can be requested through the Public Works Department, where they can come through and a work order can be done for that purpose in itself. To assess the parking and assess the fire hydrant and where to park, where not to park. And I think that that could be a viable solution as well as far as parking.
So, and with all due respect to everyone here, we, we were presented an agenda item sometime back that was moving from, what, the five rooms to the seven? And nobody was here. Now, maybe that's because you weren't notified, I don't know. But I'm a believer, and I'm pretty sure that Z realizes this, I know others do, that I'm a believer, everybody gets to be heard. Okay? Some of the things that happened up here tonight that you heard, you weren't involved in the front end of all of that. Okay, so it wasn't really bickering, it was procedure, which I'm a big procedural-type guy. So let's talk about that. Because if we restrict this, we restrict every bed and breakfast out there, period. Because how do you do one and not the other? And I don't know, I mean, I'm not saying I'm for or against that. I'm just saying, how do you, how do you single down and rifle down on one bed and breakfast and not the entirety of the community? Because we were classified as the bed and breakfast community, and none of them have these restrictions. And I also go with that if somebody's going to have a big meeting or a party, maybe they'll have a party there, I don't know. But if they're going to have big meetings, they're going to go to Adams Depot, or they're going to find some other venue that's going to be able to accommodate them. Meridian Tech, wherever they're going to go and do this. I know that, when you're talking about a meeting of, you know, having fourteen people over, little Mary's getting married, she has her bridal shower in there. She's not allowed to do that, really? Come on. How does that work? Okay? If I'm at my house, my, my Thanksgiving's fifty to sixty people, so I don't know what yours is. And at the end of the day, when, and I get it in the parking lot. I mean, I get it, the parking issue, I do get that, hundred percent. Z, that's why I questioned, the one question I had with you. Because I do understand, street parking in this community is limited, but it's a reality. There, we don't have a ban on street parking. So how does that work? If I'm coming over to your house, whether it's Z's or Dan's or anybody else in this room, Chris, and you have a pool and you bring, you invite twenty people over on a Saturday to go to the pool party? And Sunday, it's guys' pool party, so all the husbands get to go Sunday? And then everybody decides, we're going to have a poker night, so we're going to have it at your house, Chris? So now there's twenty guys and twenty wives Friday night at your house having a poker party while the women are out back. We're not allowed to do that? Really? I don't buy it. Okay, and that's what my position is. If we're going to restrict this like that, we got to restrict everybody. And that's just my position.
I live across the street from the temple, and the temple, I mean.
That's a huge.
From, from September till March, they've got an event there. It feels like every day. And they park, not on their property, but on, in front of my house from Drexel, all the way down, it feels like, Marvel lives by me too. I mean, they've, months on end with events.
Two blocks west.
Yeah.
One and two blocks west.
Yeah, and I don't care. I have a B and B, next door to me is a family, and then next door to them is a B and B.
But they're not blocking your driveway, are they?
Nobody's blocking my driveway. I don't even remember giving permission for them to do that. If I did, I forgot, but no one cared. But there's a B and B two doors down from me, and I live across the street from probably, other than the lazy E arena, the largest event place in the city. Or maybe in the four-oh-five for all I know. I mean, it's the world's largest temple, million square feet, and they have these massive world parties over here, just flooding my street. And it, and it doesn't stop there. The elementary school parked down the road from me. The child pickup line comes all the way down in front of my house. I got the temple, the child pickup line, and a B and B. I mean, I understand what you guys are saying more than you'll ever know about cars being parked outside, but as long as nobody's blocking my driveway, I mean, I live in town, I, I don't live in the country. So I, I echo what Councilman Bothroyd said. I mean, we, we're a, we're a B and B community, and they're all over the place. I just don't see how we tell one B and B and one B and B only, you're not going to have parties, and where, you can only have so many people inside, and you're not, I mean, I, I just don't see how we do that.
That's my only issue as well with the whole thing, is restricting only one. Because that's, Dan, is there others that are restricted? I keep asking this question, hoping that you're, somebody's at one point going to say, yeah, there's five others restricted.
The, I did do research. Unfortunately, about twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, there was a huge purge of all of our hard files, and we had a new computer system. So trying to find older permits is very challenging. So having said that, I could not find any that had the specific conditions.
So there was a big controversy some years back, and Ed, you were on council when we had it. It was a bed and breakfast where women wanted to use the entire, it was a historical home, wanted to use the, you'd know where it is more than me. They wanted to use the entire top floor for crafting and whatever they were going to do up there. Just, and all this stuff. And there was a huge controversy about it because they were going to destroy the entire neighborhood, and everything was going to be full all the time. It's going to be a huge party, doing their crafting and whatever, cutting out their little book, whatever they do with their books. And it never has been an issue, has it? I ask you, Ed, because.
No, it is not.
You know exactly what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
You were part of the process when they came to council. I think you were as well, Z, but I may be mistaken on that. But I think you were. So, there's got to be a medium somewhere. Maybe, maybe what Tracy's saying, maybe it's a limit of people, I don't know. But again, that's an imposition that you're going to have to put on everybody. You can't just do it for one.
Move back to that, if I may, go back to that number. Again, it's decided by law. Federal, state, or whatever, fire laws, right?
Four yard building.
Building code four, and this is a business. It's not a home. We keep referring to home, and it's said many times, something you should have in your everyday home. We want to have the same thing that you would have in your home. It's not a home, it's a business.
I know, that's the business, that's the conundrum here.
And out of the nine bed and breakfasts that I found on GuthrieOK.com, there was one that referred, and it was one room uptown, one seventeen West Harrison, that used parties as part of its advertisement. You could book parties there, and it set up to fifteen guests. Well, one seventeen West Harrison, you'd have blocks and blocks of parking if you need it. That's, there's a difference. The other bed and breakfast that advertised anything other than room rental was the Stone Lion Inn, which said, ask us about our murder mysteries. That's it. So comparing the temple parking compared to this parking, compare, it's location. Location has everything to do with it, but besides all of that, we've already determined there is a occupancy max based on law.
In the current special use permit.
But what happens when that occupancy is a bridal shower in the spring that's happening in the yard? And it's not happening in the house?
It doesn't qualify for outdoor, it's not an.
You can't have anything outdoor?
No.
No, per the current code, there's a distinction between a bed and breakfast and a group, uh, group reception.
Nothing can be done outside.
Right. Because in our code, any type of outdoor, like parties, receptions, anything like that that goes on a regular basis, and that is defined as a group reception center, which also requires a special use permit. So if they wanted to have outdoor activities such as that, they would have to come back with a special use permit for that. So there is obviously a code there that says, no, you can't have this by right. Obviously, as we're talking tonight, the, the main issue, the condition, is what they could do inside. You know, as far as any type of meetings or that. But again, for the outside, there's already, if you want to say a, well, there is a code that says you can't do it without permission of the same process.
Dan, will you discuss the individualized nature of an SUP? And how maybe we got to these conditions that are here in the first place?
Yeah, simply put, the reason that the conditions that were there was because of some of the concern from the neighboring, the neighbors in the area and that. And it was that kind of a balance between allowing the use to move forward while still taking into consideration some of the concerns or potential issues that could come along. And even one, even that particular condition that said no receptions and that was kind of put in there as a, just a reminder, the code, they couldn't do it even if they wanted.
Kasich just said was, is the most salient point here, is they didn't want us to have receptions all out there. However, the way it was written says we can't have anything indoors either. So we're kind of restricting what we can do.
No, I understand that.
So that, that was the only, but the answer, are we planning on having outdoor receptions or anything? No, we're not. It's actually not, if you've been there, it's not set up to do that, and we just don't have a room.
I've looked at all the pictures, so we're kind of seeing that it's not.
The way it's set up right now.
It's set up as a.
If the Girl Scouts come to visit your house and have a meeting inside, that's not allowed.
Correct, it's not. Correct. It's not now.
But, you know, the crazy thing is, we, we, we pick and choose what is. So if that's not allowed, then the Christmas walk's not allowed. And everything else around it's not allowed. You can't pick and say, okay, well, you're a historical building, an historical home, so, but we're gonna allow this and this and this there, but nothing else. How does that work?
Who determines, yeah, who determines that? I mean, and what opinion do you determine that?
I don't know. That's the problem I have with, if, I've been trying to get the restrictions on all the B and Bs out there, and I can't find any. Yeah. So.
Councilman Taylor, do you have any thoughts, questions?
Not really. I'm just listening.
Yep.
Dan, I would like to now ask you at this point, is twenty people in a home, you know what the home is, right? Is twenty people in there too much? Is that, I mean, is that a massive fire hazard that, I mean, I know it's kind of a loaded question.
It is a loaded question.
I know that. I get, but you are our chief.
Like you said, I mean, if Chris was to have a party and he had twenty, forty people, I mean, how do you gotta restrict that? But this one's different because it is a business.
It is.
It would, I'm curious, I was just asking Dan if, uh, any of these other bed and breakfasts in town have recent occupancy certificates awarded. So that, that's something I'll check into, to Dan, my, or my occupancy.
That's- He's all right. I, I just, I just think I hit him with a loaded question.
Okay. Eddie, do you have anything you'd like to add with this?
Very little.
Put me on the spot, Eddie.
To answer the question of who sets those requirements, those restrictions, this body. So you, you have the flexibility to be as restrictive or as flexible as you'd like to be. Uh, so, having said that, and having heard what you've heard tonight, the request before you is to eliminate that condition. You have the ability to approve it as written, approve it with conditions, amend it, or deny that.
Well, I- Go ahead. Tracy has a motion to approve it with a condition of twenty people, right?
What I'm stating is what's current to the zone, zoning rule law right now is meetings and receptions for guests only. And, yes, presently, that number is twenty. But if we find conclusively and factually that the square footage allows for twenty-five, I would say twenty-five, but we don't know that exactly right now, do we?
No.
So presently, I think, my opinion, to go on what is zone in our zoning law codes, to go with codes, period, at this time. You can add amendments, you can make suggestions to whatever you wanna do there, right?
I mean, so are you good with an occupancy load type thing, like what we're talking about?
I, I guess my question would be, how would that relate then to some of the activities that we were talking about, the civic? Uh, it's gonna-
It's gonna shut the civic stuff down. It's not gonna happen.
Well, and tha- that's your, your pleasure, but, so the answer is, no, I wouldn't wanna do that uh, just for the fact of what we, what we've done and what, what the city would like to do. So the answer would be, no, I wouldn't like that.
I would certainly think an amendment, again, as we spoke about for the territorial tour, is, that's an amendment we would make.
Yeah.
Because, one, how important that historic home is to our city, and because of the significance of the Christmas tour, home tour, very much I want to see that happen. And, yeah, you may have numbers of people through there, but they're through there. They're not.
Yeah, I, I think the-
So I think that's a good thing. I would perfectly be willing to say some kind of variance, so you're not breaking your SUP in that case.
Right. I guess, I guess the, uh, the danger on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you an irony right now. And the irony is, because of the cease and desist letter we have, we sponsored, we were, we were the sponsor of the Master Garden Club. Uh, we couldn't do that. The irony being, it is now the Thomas's House, and we're the sponsor. They can do it, we can't. And so, I guess if, if they, you know, that, that's the slippery slope that we have, is we can do the territorial, uh, you know, the Christmas, we can do this, but we can't do that. And I guess that's the, the danger. As it is, we, the house is the house. We want it to be a community place that people can come. But restricting it, it's like, well, can we do that? And then, do I get permission to do a, a tea? Do I, the garden club, the, the book club, all of these, uh, have the Girl Scouts? I, I guess that's the, the dangers, is, are we gonna violate the, the SUP then? So.
So, in response to Councilman Williams, and I'll ask, I guess I'll ask you this, Councilman, because I'm confused. How do we determine what's a viable, how do we determine that the Christmas walk that obviously benefits the city of Guthrie, okay, and not him so much, okay? Is vi, why do we approve that when it has, it, it's gonna cost him money to host it?
Well, when that's his choice not whether to host it, but we approve it because the city, the city, the citizens want it.
See, that's-
And that's a very historical site. It's mentioned, it's not on the, it's not on the historical register, but it is a historical site for our city. So therefore, it's known, it's talked about, it's in our roshers, I think. I don't know. Maybe Justin would know that. So, you know, I just don't wanna stop the people during those festivities from having the ability to go look at the house.
So that would probably be the, by volume, the largest number of people he would be having going through there. I've done it, and I've had five hundred people go through my house in one day.
And? I don't think-
No doubt parking would be an nightmare.
No, not-
You're, you're-
No, but it is, I mean, as far as congestion of traffic and parking and things, they're parking up and down your street for-
Within five, six hours.
Within six hours, so it's a continuous stream of about five hundred continuous. So it is a lot for a small area.
And, and keep in mind, occupancy, when you figure the occupancy based on the use of the property, what the square footage of the home is, just like this room here. There's a sign on that back wall that says, "No more than X number of people." I can't see it from here, there's a glare. And, but that means that-
How many?
Eighty. Eighty at one time. So if four people walk out, we're good. They come in, they go. They come in and they go. So keep that in mind. When we talk about occupancy, that's, that's meant any given period of time, that's the maximum, not throughout the day.
How many have you had in your house, any one time? Forget, forget going back to Christmas or eighty-niners, just normal people that come in that you rent to. How many have you had in there?
Uh, normally, we have, uh, fourteen would be how many we've, we've had. Uh, we've got seven rooms, if it is to maximum capacity, uh, then that would be fourteen people. Uh, I wanna, I wanna kinda add one other thing here, and that's, um, uh, the, we're not going to do anything differently, uh, that I can, that, that we've done in the last year and a half, two years. We, we, if, if this is approved, we're not gonna all of a sudden go, oh, good, we get to do. The things that we have been doing are what we plan on continuing to do, because, but now we can't do them. So you're not gonna see any drastic increase in, uh, uh, traffic. Oh, and, and I don't think, Mr. Kasek, we had complaints of, uh, I hate to say that, but, you know, the Christmas parade, or the, you know, I, I don't think, I think we actually impact the parking a lot less than, uh, you know, a lot. And so, uh, we're not gonna be doing anything appreciably different than we're doing.
Than anybody else is doing.
Well, actually, no, that, that we've done. You know, uh, the, 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 the Christmas walk, the eighty-niners, that sort of thing. So, uh, it, it's not gonna be, if this is lifted today, you're not gonna see any huge activity now. Oh, good, we get to now, that's, this is not gonna happen. The ki, the, the house kind of, uh, is its own, um, barriers to doing these things, and we just, we just don't wanna do it.
So if I wanted to rent the, all seven rooms and bring my family over and have a family reunion in those, I'm not allowed to do that?
The way it's represented.
Is that what you're saying, Dan?
No, because-
Cause it becomes a party.
Well, you would be paying a fee though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why I was saying-
I would rent the whole place.
Yeah, and that's what I-
And I wanna have a family reunion there, I'm with twenty people, whatever, whatever the occupancy is.
But you're fee paying, you're gonna be fee paying guests, which is obviously allowed.
If we, if we, if we lift this.
Yes, if we lift this, right, cause it's not-
Yeah, cause right now it's-
Currently allowed, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to where, if this is lifted, or versus if it's not lifted. If it's not lifted, I'm not allowed to rent that place and have my family reunion, right? Today. I'm just saying, I'm not.
Yeah, no, it, cause-
The answer is, no, you're not, because I'm not.
If you happen to have people, your, your family rent each room in that, in that, you could do that today. Even if you call it a family reunion, because you're renting guests, you're paying guests of the bed and breakfast. Now, if you just, I see what you're saying. If you just wanted to rent it out just to have a, basically, a party or get together and that, then you're right. By the condition, you can't do that, even if it's under twenty people. Did that answer your question?
I guess. I mean-
Dan, how, how, how could you amend this to allow the events that we're talking about, the, the home tours and those kinda things, without totally removing all the conditions?
I mean, if there's specific events, obviously, it can just be stated that, you know, this would not apply during territorial Christmas for those tours for eighty-niners. But it would almost be, it would be very difficult to do it completely because, you know, you could have the Girl Scouts, or you could have, uh, you know, other civic groups, Kiwanis or whatever, and that. So, I mean, I guess you could put a stipulation on there that it could be allowed for, again, civic groups, which narrows it down to where you're not gonna have a group of people that are gonna rent it simply to have a birthday party.
So civic group being, for example, somebody mentioned the, uh, garden club or something that went to the Thomas's House versus his house.
Right.
What's the difference? Other than one's residential, one's a residential and the other's a B and B, I mean, the parking is still gonna be the same, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying that the parking's gonna be different. I was just saying to have some limitation-
The event's still gonna last the same amount of time.
Yeah, but it does put a little bit more str, uh, um, framework, I guess, on not having an open-ended, so anybody could just rent it for whatever. It would be more civic-based.
But, but, but Chris can have a hundred-person pool party at his house every single day, three sixty-five days a year.
Yes. There are obviously other codes that may come into play that could, you know, but generally, yes, from a zoning standpoint, you're correct.
Noise and all that stuff could be part of it.
Yeah.
Chris is having another party.
I didn't know you were such a big party person.
I know.
You guys are just really putting it on.
It's funny. Sorry, I'm gonna try.
Thirty people.
But I, I think it, I think it, on Tracy's, on Tracy's point, I think it does have to have a load, an occupancy load maximum, just like everything does, I would think. I don't think you could have two hundred fifty people in there, uh, for a weekend.
Oh, no.
You know, I'm not saying you would. I'm just saying I don't think you could.
We don't have, I have no problem with the occupancy, uh, limit that we have for the guests.
So why don't we just approve it, why don't we approve it based on the legal occupancy limit of the structure?
I agree with that.
Instead of trying to put a number to it.
Yeah.
I, I suggest we table this. Let me reach out to Jonathan Strayhorn with Oki Fire Safety. Get an occupancy load on this.
There you go.
And go from there, and we'll revisit this.
I agree.
Sounds great.
Is that, well, how long's that gonna take?
A year.
Yeah, that's the next question. You do that- So you will know by next council meeting.
I, I would, we'll work on it. I don't wanna promise that, but I will get on that first thing in the morning.
Right, we'll work on it, cause the only way to do it is to have the specific floor plans and layout, so it's gonna, we'll have to get with the applicant, or, uh, an architect or what to draw that up. Cause without that, we can't get a proper count.
Personally, I'm gonna, I don't know about the rest of council, I'm gonna wanna see this on each and every other bed and breakfast in the community. Same exact thing.
But surely, the, uh, the fire occupancy though is not gonna exceed the fifteen people he's got maxed. But we're shutting him down for another month.
I don't think we're shutting him down, are we? He can still do his stuff.
No, he can't. He can't do anything right now.
Oh, well, I think that we open it up until we get, until we get that back, at least. You can't, you can't shut it down in the meantime, we're only talking two weeks here.
He has been.
Shutting down one.
The party.
Yeah, but let me just say, let me make a statement here real quick. This is not about the five to seven rooms. That meeting happened, and, and that, that ship has sailed a long time ago. I'm sorry that people weren't invited to that. They should've been. Uh, and I would've loved to have been, and I would've liked to hear from everybody, but I don't send out those, and council wouldn't send that out. Uh, Dan, did everybody get noticed at the meeting?
Yes, the requirements are that all property owners within three hundred feet are sent a letter. Whether or not they actually, you know, physically received it or what, I don't know. But we have our mailing that is certified at the post office that they do send them. So if they're not within three hundred feet, they obviously would not get an actual notification.
So in an effort to maybe, maybe find some, a path forward, if the occupancy is a, is a holdup, and that's something we'd like to explore. Typically, when we evaluate occupancies for structures, it's tied to a building permit. So any renovations that have taken place at this property haven't required a building permit per the international code standards for building code permit issuance. So that would explain why you haven't seen one up to this point. So if we could, if, if we want to see events take place until you have an occupancy, you could have a temporary condition today to allow those events, pending the results of both the planning department and the fire department coming back with what that occupancy load is. And, and how they do that, they, they have a table that takes into account the use. And like, for example, when we're looking at this room, you look at the room as a general assembly, and, and I'm speaking out of turn, because I've been out of the code business for a little while. You look at the room, it's a general assembly, and you take into account every chair, every desk, every podium, every, every standard, every TV. Every fixture that is in the room goes against that occupancy count. So that's how the fire department has set that through the NFPA and the ICC. So we can look at that, bring that back to you, with the understanding that at this time, if there are any events that wanna go on, you could amend that maximum requirement from twenty to forty, or fifty, or whatever you'd like for it to be. Or you could say, until we have that occupancy, that there's nothing going forward. I, I, I'm hearing mixed, mixed direction from the council, but trying to find a, a middle ground to get us a path forward.
Just the, just for the last clarification, Jim, thank you, or Mr. Martin, thank you. Can you, is the B and, B and B up and running right now, where you can have seven rooms rented?
Where we can have, uh, we-
Seven rooms rented.
Yeah, we can have seven rooms rented, yeah. Yeah, the only thing we can't do is have any kind of civic events or, as, as a litany of those.
Last clarification.
Yeah.
And is there any of those planned between now and our next council?
No, we had to cancel them, cancel them.
I don't know why they would plan them if they didn't know if they could have one.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Oh, I didn't mean-
Are people calling, wanting to do things, and you're-
No. No, they're not.
So it's not shutting you down if we-
It is not, no.
If we just table this thing-
Yeah.
Uh, till we get an occupancy report, because you can still have your seven rooms filled with your fourteen people.
Yeah, I, I-
Whatever.
One of the things I'd like to caution is, is we're looking at two, we're, we're kinda looking at the ethereal, ethereal aspect, or the, the, uh, and then the, the legal aspect here, and I'd kinda like a sense of the, the council, our, our, you know, if, if it's legal to do it, it sounds like the council would, would be amenable to it. If it's not, then, then no. Is that kinda what?
Well, I think that's, I mean, that's my position on it, but again, it's gonna have to be on every bed and breakfast in the community. On all of them.
You can't do for one, but not the rest.
You're gonna shotgun this thing, and it's gonna have to be everybody.
I appreciate it.
Let me, let me ask this question, and, and this, this, just so I can understand, and so staff can understand what our directive is to go forward.
Let me, let me ask this question, and, and this, this, just so I can understand, and so staff can understand what our directive is to go forward. Once we determine the occupancy, what's our intent with having the occupancy load?
Yeah, it's a good question. So if they come back and they say you can have, I'm just throwing out a number, a hundred.
Sure.
People in there, then, then what are we, what are we doing?
Well, I think we're approving this based on what the legal occupancy is, and that what, you know, what Tracy's saying. And that what, that's, your motion is to approve it as it is with basically the legal occupancy of whatever that is.
Yes.
And that's what we're saying.
And we're okay with that. If, if the occupancy is a hundred people, we're okay with that.
No, it won't be a hundred people.
No, I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking according to the existing zoning code right now, which is, uh, more than the twenty. Isn't that correct? There is. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's not true. Uh, there is no number in the present zoning.
Correct. But we're gonna get it through.
It was based off the special. Okay, but we're gonna get it through the fire department, we're gonna get it through fire.
Yes, so, but the current SUP is twenty people.
Twenty people.
So yes, I say until we know further, let's stay with that.
Is there, okay, that's why I, I, I agree in the spirit of what he's saying. Is there anything we can, way we can word it, where once we get the number, it's already in effect, or do we have to?
That's not gonna deter your business with twenty people at this point. You're gonna know in a month or less, right?
Yeah.
Should know in a couple of weeks.
Well, his business already has.
And that should be, uh, acceptable to the audience as well, I would think.
I would think so.
I would hope, I mean, that's a, the.
I, I guess my, my question, during these events, there's, there's no way that occupancy is going to be, uh, I mean, Chief, if I can ask you, uh, what, what happens when you have hundreds of people go through a house? Is that, or, or business, or?
It's just like this, if you have more than eight, we come shut it down.
Okay, all right, so, yeah.
Or if it's flowing like on Christmas, and it goes through, that's Christ.
Right, it was, it was what the city manager had indicated.
Right, correct.
So, yeah, as four leave, four more can come in.
Well, right now, you're permitted to have twenty people in there with, with the occupancy, right? Isn't that right?
That's correct.
And so, I mean, that's what you're permitted legally to have, is my understanding.
But no, and like Tracy was saying, we, we go ahead and approve the parties and stuff, but he, we, it's only up to twenty until we know the occupancy, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, because the current code says that you can have, have daytime meetings and receptions for guests, for guests, with the limit of twenty. For the occu, the SUP says twenty, the new zone code says that you can have, include temporary accommodation of daytime meetings or receptions for guests. So unless that changes, that means the guests that you have staying there, you can have meetings for, or gatherings for.
If we could put that in a motion, where we can have the guests do, do that sort of.
Or guests for, and a limit of twenty, that, that's the code.
So council, I think the one question, uh, is, is how are we finding guests? Because we've been talking about guests as paying guests at his business. I believe that Dan's gonna say, when we're so discussing guests in this sense, it's anybody that walks in.
Well, that's a good point.
Right.
I assume guests mean people who are renting a room.
And I want, I just wanna make sure we're all, that's, we're talking apples and apples.
The, yeah, the, the problem is, is we're, what we're, what we're not talking about is, is guests here. The, 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 the activities that we're talking about now are not guest-related. They're outside civic things, and I think that's a, a major difference, and that's.
I agree.
And that's what the, with the council, what we'd like to, to say, gee, we, we'd like to do that, and at this point, we're, we're not, our guests, sure, but, but that's really not what we're talking about. As, as Mr. Bothrowd said, we, we took care of the seven rooms, that, that issue's settled, but now we're talking about.
I feel like it, what we're doing here is that if we approve that, this as is, he is still under the rules of occupancy code, like any other building, and he, he'll need to know that anyway, just like anybody, any other building in town, we need to know what that occupancy is. And so that shouldn't have a bearing whether or not he can have events or not.
That's right.
Cuz everybody's, everybody's beholden to the fire occupancy. My building is, everybody's, you know, so I don't see why we have to wait to know what the occupancy is for fire, when everybody's beholden to that. So why are we waiting on him to do that, to do, you know, so I.
Well, and I do hear, uh, in the audience, parking is an issue, and, and I'm real empathetic on that, too. And so with that being said, what happens during, uh, the holidays with, cuz, see, I would imagine that Christmas, I mean, the, I imagine they're going through your house during the holidays, right?
Every once in a while. They've been there twice in eighteen years.
But, so parking become an issue at that point during that deal?
My issue with parking is when people park in my yard.
Yeah, no, I would get that.
Well, that's illegal, I mean, you can't.
Yeah, I get that.
You can't do that.
But they do it.
That's not on the, that's not, that's not his fault.
My chamber meeting last February, you blocked me out of my residence. I had to park up about two blocks ahead, so I invited myself to your chamber meeting, just to see what's going on.
Okay. Well, that's illegal. I mean, so I mean, when I call the cops, it's illegal.
I mean, I've been blocked out of my driveway by the kids' pickup line, you know, things happen that are inconvenient sometimes, but they are temporary.
This is the business. This is not a business in a residential area. We are residential.
A lot of people have businesses in a residential area.
What, what's, if I, if I may, what's interesting is the, the business aspect isn't, that doesn't affect the parking. It's the civic activities.
That's where I was getting right go with.
That's the reality.
Oh, and that's exactly where I was going with it.
And I would say, whether you like it or not, the city streets open to anybody.
Yes.
So we can't deny people to park on the street.
Okay, let's, let's get back to us up here and the person at the microphone.
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't.
But I would like to make further comment on the, the guest question, of whether guests or any guests are people that rent. The line above that speaks specifically to the establishment that provides temporary accommodations typically included a morning meal to overnight guests. So are we gonna differentiate guests in one sentence and not in the other? One clearly says overnight guests. The next line with the, may also include temporary accommodation of daytime meetings or receptions for guests for a fee. I assume it's the same guests.
Could be different.
No, it says male also included.
That sounds different.
Yep.
And I think there's, there's kinda two issues there. One, uh, by the definition that's in the zoning code, which Councilman Williams is referencing, if there were no other, uh, if you wanna say approvals, oversight, or whatever, he is absolutely correct, that if you're gonna have any meeting or anything of that nature, it would be limited strictly to guests or basically paying guests. Obviously, through a special use permit process, there's an ability to adjust those different aspects, given the situation. So if on this case, they wanted to say it could be open to any meetings that don't exceed twenty people, we can do that. It doesn't have to be limited to guests. But if we are going to approve it per the code, then it would be based on that definition, and it would only be guests.
So I think that there's a motion on the table with, from Tracy, right?
Do you wanna restate that, Tracy?
No, I stick with my motion. I, I don't care if it's a motion or not. Here's the point. I just wanna follow the code as is right now today until we have further information. That's it. That means no meetings, yes, except for guests. You can still have meetings up to twenty people for guests, that's what I read.
Well, you're not gonna have any civic things. You're not gonna have the garden club over. You're not gonna have the chamber meeting, any of that until we, until he gets back. And then at that council meeting, we're gonna have to have another, we're gonna have to then put the stipulations on it to where guests, and it's a civic event, we're gonna have to address it.
But for now.
Based on the occupancy of what he's gonna bring us.
My motion was to follow the current, which changes your meeting question. If we follow today's code, it allows meetings, daytime meetings or receptions for guests. And then we go back to the twenty number, until that's changed.
Okay, but it doesn't address, uh, what we're, what we're talking about.
Well, it doesn't address opening it to the general public, no. It states specifically for guests, and I'm for that right now, because that's what we have in front of us. Without any amendments, that's what we have.
So your motion is to not approve this at all, as far as he can't, he can't have any meetings, parties?
No, he's approving it.
My motion is to, to put in effect the zoning code that we have today, that we approved a month ago, which states the bed and breakfasts can have daytime meetings and receptions for guests. And we've already determined the, the previous decided amount of people, maximum was twenty from the original planning commission meeting and council approval, until we find out legally how many people you can have at the load limit, or whatever you wanna call it.
And that's gonna happen in the next couple of days.
You'll be back here by next council.
So for clarity from a, from a staff perspective, I think if we're going to look at this again after we've evaluated the occupancy, I think it makes more sense to table the item in its entirety than to try and amend it now, and then go back to the table. If, if we're gonna come back anyway, we need to just table the item altogether.
But he can still have his seven rooms of occupancy.
She said that that's already taken care of.
Yeah, so.
So just table it entirely until two weeks.
Then I'll make a second.
Just table it entirely for the moment.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
And I'll give a second.
Motion in a second. All right, any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Okay.
Which is what you wanted. The, to, to have a table, go back to planning and through the whole deal.
Now, now for clarification, won't go back to planning.
I'm not, so I'm not planning, but through the.
Planning department.
Through the planning department.
And, and we'll have it on the next city council agenda, so this is your notice. It'll, it'll be June seventeenth, six-thirty P.M.
I would recommend, um, that, uh, the citizens that are having a parking issue, please reach out to Public Works and request that a road assessment be done in the area for parking issues, and any other issues that you guys have. Not just parking, the fire hydrant that, that is not marked, that I heard in the meeting, anything else that you guys have in that issue. Maybe it can be done in time. I'm not sure of Tenny's schedule, but I would urge you guys to call the Public Works Department and put that on their schedule for a work order.
All right, we have a motion in a second to table this item. Further questions or statements, please cast your votes. All right, unanimous approval to table the item until the meeting on the seventeenth, seventeenth, June seventeenth. All right, item number ten, confirmation of mayor's nomination to the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to appoint Tracy Williams to the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board for a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. Kate Young.
Mayor and council, while this nomination does not require any introduction, I will note that council, Councilman Williams filled Dr. Kent Smith's unexpired term, which expired at the, expires at the end of this month. Approval of this nomination will appoint the councilman to the airport board until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second. Well, I, I do wanna say before we vote, uh, I've actually looked, looked into this, and I've, I've heard, uh, Councilman Williams, in the, probably the last ten years, you've been generally one of the best additions to this board, and that you've served, um, the interests of Guthrie very well, and, um, we haven't felt that in years, so I just wanted to say I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. So we have a motion in a second, right?
Somebody's second.
Okay, okay, cast your votes, please.
All votes ranked.
Unanimous approval to confirm, uh, Councilman Williams to the Edmond Regional Airport Board. Uh, item number eleven, confirmation of mayor's nomination to the Guthrie Parks and Urban Forestry Board. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to reappoint Carol Side a second term, appoint Betty Burline and Levi Wharton to, to fill two vacancies on the Guthrie Parks and Urban Forestry Board. All terms will expire June first, two thousand twenty-seven. Tenny Maker.
Yes, mayor and council. Um, Guthrie Parks Board and Urban Forestry Board currently has two vacancies and one seat set to expire. Uh, the one vacancy was created by the resignation of Martha Turner on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the other has remained unfilled. Carol Seed has submitted an application to continue serving and is eligible for reappointment to the, to her second term expiring June first of two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-seven. Applicants were also received from Betty Burline and Levi Horton. The mayor is recommending the reappointment of Carol Seed and the appointment of Betty Burline and Levi Horton to fill the vacant positions.
Is this a three-year term or a four-year term?
They are. Two-year terms.
Two-year term. How many times, then, I know we've talked about, I'm just, so the general public knows, how many times can they be re-elected or put back on this board?
Twice.
Two times, okay, yeah, I wanted to make sure everybody heard.
We made that.
Bro. Yes, I knew we did. I just wanted people, the general public, to know it.
Yeah, it's good to know.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Further discussion, please cast your votes.
All votes ranked.
Okay, all right, unanimous approval from all those present to confirm, uh, Carol Side, Betty Burline, Levi Horton to the Parks Board. Oh, Tenny, you're staying up there.
Yeah, he's next, again.
Tenny, how do you, how do you pronounce this company's name?
Beiko.
Beiko.
B-E-Y, that's what it seems like.
B-E-Y-T-C-O?
You're right. Uh, Beiko Inc., change order number one, Booster Pump Station. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve, approve with conditions, amend or deny change order number one to the Westside Booster Pump Station Upgrades Project. Tenny?
Yes, again, mayor and council, change order one will actually decrease the contract amount by nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Uh, this decrease is due to, uh, bypass line valve that was found during the excavation of the area. The city can connect to the existing line, uh, slash valve, and eliminate the need for an insertion valve that we originally had in this project that will no longer be needed. It makes sense for the city of Guthrie to reconnect to the found valve.
Okay, any question, any questions, comments for?
This is, this is the one you've been working on the west side, right, that's around where the public school's at, where the new school's at?
Yes, right next to our west side, uh, water tower, uh, adjacent to the school there, just around the corner.
I'm making a motion to prove that. Money is money the way you get it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, cast your votes, please.
All votes ranked.
All right, unanimous approval for the, uh, change order number one of the Booster Pump Station. Thank you, Tenny.
Thank you.
Uh, item number thirteen, city manager's report.
Yes, mayor and council, as you may have noticed, the west side tower is complete, uh, so the remodel of, I'm sorry, remodel. It's getting late.
Makes sense.
The sandblasting, the repairs, and repaint of both the interior and exterior of the east side and west side water tower are complete. East side tower's back in service, west side tower's not quite yet. Uh, do have a few repairs and some, um, testing, DEQ testing that's required before we put the west side tower back into service, so. Excited to see that project come to fruition. It has really changed the landscape on both sides of town. To our knowledge and our records, the, the towers had not been painted in their lifetime, so sixty to eighty years at least, that we could tell. So that's a, a big quality of life change. Um, thanks to the voters for CIP number two on that one. Uh, we are beginning in the budget process for fiscal year twenty-six, so I have distributed the calendar. Kim has distributed budget docs to the department heads, and Kim and I will be working on revenue projections in the next, uh, next week. Um, I'll be upfront with you, um, thanks to the direction of this council and your staff, uh, as, in terms of sales tax collections. We took the hit this year, and we cut our budget this year by two percent to be prepared for what would come fiscal year twenty-six. Because we did that, because we were proactive and conservative in our financial forecasting, we are prepared for next year with a flat budget. So most cities are having to cut their budget, and because they weren't prepared for that, we were prepared for that. That's the quality of your staff, that's the quality of this council, and what we've been prepared for as we saw the economic trends on their way down. In addition to the budget process, we are also beginning contract negotiations with both the FOP and the International Association of Firefighters. And the last thing I'll share with you, another update on CIP number two projects, um, the ADA intersections. Intersections, we'll kick off with their pre-construction meeting tomorrow at Public Works. So we look forward to seeing that project come to fruition, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Should I add? Go ahead, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was just wondering, do you know if the permit has gone through with the railroad commission?
We received comments back from the railroads consultant, and they asked for a revision on one of the plan sheets. We sent that back, I believe it was Friday of last week. I've asked for an update this morning, we have not received approval yet, but we have secured both easements and have applied for the DEQ permit, so.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I asked Eddie this earlier today, but I'll have him just say it for the general public, but can you tell them an update on the splash pad mineral wells?
Yes, so mineral wells and Tenny may know, are we back up?
We are back up.
Okay, so, we were, we were waiting on a vendor to come up from Texas with the part needed for the splash pad. They were supposed to be here today or tomorrow. This morning when we visited, they were, we were hoping when they come up, they would be able to fix the issue, and it does appear that we're up and running at mineral wells. Banner is still closed. Until we can get the dual feed of water to the west side, we just can't jeopardize fire safety and water to the residents until that's complete.
That was why I asked about the permit. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Okay, item number 14, request comments from members of city council. Councilman Williams.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to compliment the staff, so I'm ahead of you. The fact that you've put such diligence into the budget and restraining yourselves back as many cities did, and they're in trouble.
That's right.
But I appreciate your being conservative in that manner, looking ahead, so that right now, we're okay. Flat is good, so I appreciate that.
Councilman Taylor.
Hey, you beat me to it. I appreciate what the staff does, though. You guys go above and beyond everything. I appreciate all of you. Thank you, Eddie, I appreciate what you do. I've called you a couple of times and asked questions, so, and, yeah, we're getting the splash pads back up and going. Once we get that west side water situation, I think we'll have another splash pad, and then, hey, the lake's full, it's running over, I showed you a picture a while ago, we had another inch and a half out there, so you can imagine all the water ran into it. So it's great to have plenty of water. Now we just got to get the line over to the west side so those people that can have their water back. Other than that, that's it.
Could I reiterate on splash pads, because I've been asked this question in the convenience store, where you meet people, right?
Right.
What the heck is going on with the splash pad banner part? And for the record, for people to hear again, we have one water supply line to the west side now, of two. One was taken out by flood debris in the cottonwood. So, currently, we are limited to our supply, pressure, and all, so it just simply, we cannot open up that splash pad to use 20,000 gallons a day at this time until we have adequate supply.
And Councilman, I'll add to that, staff prepared for the summer season, we, we got the splash pad ready to go, we were testing it, and we saw issues because the equipment was not operating correctly, because it didn't have the water coming to it, the pressure and the volume that it needs to run appropriately. So we didn't make that decision arbitrarily. It is something that staff, we were prepared to open it if it was possible, but it just wasn't possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's closer to 50,000 gallons.
Seriously? Yeah. Where did I get 20 from? So all, both splash pads do 50?
One's, one's average 40, and one's average 50.
Wow.
Can't correct, that's what it's been the answer.
Okay. Well, I feel even, I don't know how to feel about it.
You got to take that in.
My goodness. And then when you had the swimming pool going, and it was second, what was it?
That was 40 a day.
50,000, 40,000, I mean, that's a lot of water. You're pulling a lot of water.
But look at the fun the kids are having.
Well, you know, they are.
They are, I've been there with them. They are, they're having a heck of a time.
Yeah, it's good. But I mean, I'm not against it, so don't, don't... But that's a lot of water.
Yeah. Councilman Bothroway?
Um, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gibbs?
I just want, I think everybody's done a really great job, and I appreciate it. Today's answered questions. Dan got lucky, I didn't have any, and Eddie's answered a plethora of questions for me as well, and I appreciate it, so, thank you.
Okay. I want to thank the city manager and staff as well for the budget, or we've been, we've been accused of being reactionary instead of proactive, and that's proactive.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate it, way to go. I want to thank everybody who came out tonight and spoke, and took the time out to sit and listen. I want to thank everyone on council as well for your time and your thoughts. And that is all that I have, but don't go anywhere. We have another, another episode, we have another meeting, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting, and I will call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting to begin there 2025. Item number two is the consent agenda, items A through I.
Some move.
We have a motion.
You don't have to read them all.
No, I need a second.
I'll see it. Don't read them all. And for the sake of people who don't understand, these are repeated.
Correct.
From the original agenda.
That's correct.
Good clarification, not all items. Most of them are confirming city council items, however, you've got a permit here for a C-MOM sewer, sewer main replacement that is strictly on the PWA agenda.
Okay.
That's just an example.